We will have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. All three county commissioners here. It is July 20th, 10 o'clock, and some major announcements, some very exciting about the future of Montague County will happen today. But with that, we have to get through some of the paperwork. County Administrator, consent and approval.
Fifty-two in honorations for $20,220.29. Did I say fifty or fifty-two? Fifty-two. There's fifty-two, just to make sure. Minutes for July 13th, 2022. Vouchers: General County Fund, $197,371.56; Magistrate Fort, $326.55; 911, $3,001.07; Chestnut Ridge Park, $3,002.05; Camp Muffley, $12,303.90; Mason Dixon Park, $1,008.26; Mon County Center, $9,179.73; Recreation Levy, $395,500.60; Assessors' Valuation, $6,006.20.38; Federal Forfeiture, $15,500; Parks and Recreation, $24,473.36; Purchasing Card Vouchers: General County, $13,006.95; 911, $25,003.83; Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,008.44; Camp Muffley, $3,001.23; Mason Dixon Park, $1,133.93; Mon County Center, $7,810.2; Assessors' Valuation, $82.79, for a voucher total of $7,146.16. We have a... No, we don't. Physician vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for July 20th, 2022.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented with discussion.
Second. Pop moves in second.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question you were asking me, but it was staring me right in the face. It's fifty-two listings for 20,000.
Okay. I wasn't sure if I said fifty or fifty-two.
And the voucher totals is actually the last of the fiscal year '22, which is $128,396.32. And the third reporting for fiscal year '23, $585,663.84 for that grand total. So just want to make that distinction.
Okay. Pop moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes.
There's one other fiduciary item. There was an objection to a small estate in the estate of Roberta Wiles.
If I understand correctly, state statute requires we refer to fiduciary commissioner.
Commissioner Arnett had a conversation with the county clerk this morning, so.
Right. There's actually not an actionable item on the small estates. The procedure is that the clerk discusses it with the fiduciary commissioner to decide if it's their recommendation to open it as a full estate. There's currently no objection procedure on the small estate process, so we have no actionable item.
Okay.
Okay. It's just stated.
Noted. Really noted.
Just stated for the record. Okay. Introduction of new employees. I will go first this time. Sheriff Perry Palmer. I will not make the same mistake again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Sheriff.
I have Elena Harvey here, who will be starting the 1st of August as a Process Transport Officer, beginning salary of $2,807.20 per month. For your approval.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Pop moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Welcome. Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay. We have.
Go ahead. Wait a minute. He's got one other.
Oh, you have one other?
One real quick thing, so I can get in.
Oh, oh, sorry. Go right ahead.
About the tax notices.
Great.
We just wanted to let the public know that the tax bills have not been mailed out yet. The printers are behind. They were set to go out on the 15th of July, and as of today, have not gone out yet. But we did want to let everyone know that the amounts are available online, or they can call the office. You can pay online, or you can mail your check in, but we're just letting everyone know, no, they have not missed their bill. We're getting several calls about the bills, and we just want the public to be alerted that if they do call the office, we're giving out amounts. They can mail the checks in, or they can pay online.
Great.
Sheriff Kelly, thank you for that update.
Thank you very much. Okay. We have Circuit Clerk. Or Representative, or soon-to-be.
Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning.
Good. How are you gentlemen doing?
Great.
This is Jody Wolburn. She will become our new deputy clerk effective August 1st. As a deputy clerk.
Great.
I move that we approve the personnel as presented.
Second.
Pop moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome to the county.
And we will see you at noon.
She is already here and very familiar with the county. She's coming to us from the assessors' office.
Oh, okay, great.
We didn't steal her. It was just happenstance, but yeah, so we're very excited to have her.
And we're glad to keep you.
Thank you.
We're very excited to see you hiring personnel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I'll see you guys at noon about that.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll see you at noon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Ag Agent, Mon County Extension Office.
This is the new position that you all talked to the dean about funding. This Amanda Jane Patterson. She's actually not here. She won't actually start until August 1st, but we wanted to go ahead and get approval. She is a full-time exempt family and child development program coordinator, again, effective August 1st, salary set at $40,000 a year, and is eligible for benefits.
Move to approve personnel as presented.
Second.
Pop moves in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And this is another county. This is a county position. That's why we're approving it. And they'll be in a couple of weeks. She'll be here along with the other extension personnel that were hired through W in our agreement, so they'll both be giving us an update on what they bring to the extension office.
Great. Do we have any other new employees? Okay. At this time, we will have comments from the public. Anyone who wishes to speak, if they want to come on down and give their name, address, and what they would like to talk about. And I see there's an indentation here. Jenny had worked on this last night. Jenny, you did a real nice job. No, thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak? We're here for all the other things. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close and move forward. Okay. On the list, on the agenda, is a presentation, I-79 Chaplain Hill Project. Let me explain a little bit about what is about to happen, and very excited to announce this. And I'm doing this on behalf of the three county commissioners. We are excited to announce our submission of a federal grant application aimed at enhancing and expanding the WV DOH's planned improvements at exit 159... 155 on I-79. The grant project dubbed the I-79 Chaplain Hill Gateway Project will include a program that provides comprehensive multimodal access from the Mon Boulevard Bridge to Mylan Park. This project will improve Montague County by reducing traffic and increasing safety within this primary gateway. And here's the key: From I-79 to the city of Morgantown, for WV campuses to the east, and Mylan Park to the west. And before I talk more about it, we've been very fortunate to have Senators Capito and Senator Manchin, who've been really working with us. And Senator Capito has two representatives here, Jennifer Posey and Julian Butcher, who will be the Morgantown office. And they allow me to read the statement from Senator Capito. "Montague County continues to be among the fastest-growing regions of West Virginia, and it's important. We have expanded reliable infrastructure in place to support expansion and development. The I-79 Chaplain Hill Gateway Project would upgrade the existing exit 155 interchange and adjacent roads, as well as replace bridges that are currently in poor condition, which limits expanded highway capacity. If awarded these funds, this project would have a significant impact on the development of the Morgantown area, and it's why I personally advocated to Transportation Secretary Buttigieg, on behalf of the Montague County Commission's application." And I would be remiss if I didn't also mention Jessica Cross, who has been instrumental in working with us, and I wanted to do that. I do know we may have... Do we have by Senator Manchin, by way of video or not, Mike Garcia? Okay, we want to see if there's anyone on at first. If not, that's fine. We just... He may come on later. Okay, if he comes on. Besides that, we have amazing group of people in the audience. And first of all, I can't say enough about what these two individuals have done, and together for Montague County. State Senator Clements, who I really appreciate, not only this, but the Harmony Grove. When we needed people and voices, you were there, and I want to personally thank you. Also Delegate Statler, who has been on this, working with us, and being the voice of the Western Inn when there was no voice. And because of that, we were able to work with everyone in the legislature to get what we are about to propose, and we really appreciate that. Along with that, we have Representatives Mayor Celine in Morgantown, and this is what we wanted to show. This project is not just about Montague County. This is about... We have 20 different recommendations and letters supporting this project. We have Latina from Granville. We have Bobby Doyle from Star City. And I want to say, Bobby, what you don't know is yesterday, this is what Bobby and his staff built, and now the city of Morgantown and the county are using these facilities for the next year. So we personally want to thank you on that. We have Representatives from Mylan Park. We have MMPO Executive Director. We have Representatives from MAP. We have our Planning Commission. And did I forget anyone else? Great. With that, what we're about to do is have a mini explanation of what's going on. And here is the key that I would like the public to understand. We have already, from the Roads to Prosperity, the DOH planning improvements for the bridges over I-79, convert the interchange to a DDI that we'll explain, and westbound flyover at intersection Chaplain Hill Route 19. Because of Senator Capito and because of Senator Manchin, they informed us nine months ago that funds will be coming down, and they didn't know what it was called at the time, and it became the INFRA program. And what we thought was, this was the perfect time to get everyone together, West Ridge, Gateway, the communities, to not just piecemeal it, because what we usually hear is, well, we're happy we get a little bone thrown in us. Why don't we be like the top dogs and do like all the other states? And what we're doing is an enhancement and expansion of the grant, so we'll complete a multimodal path connection. And I want to thank Jenny for this, because she has been adamant on this. She has been very adamant on this, and that's why Morgantown is really excited about this, because she said she wanted to get... It's no good having services if you can't get them from A to B, and we got to provide this for the future. And what this will be is from the Mon Boulevard Bridge through the new exit 155 to Mylan Park. Now, I could continue to talk about this, but that's not what I want to do. I would rather turn it over to the amazing team that who worked with us on this grant. And we have Megan O'Reilly and Amy Stout, and if you want to, how you want to do it, propose it, be my guest. The floor is yours. If I may, just have one more thing. Ryan Lynch just walked in from West Ridge Development, and I will have you speak if you want at the end. We're just at the point of presentation right now. But to have these many people representing this amazing group of Mon County and beyond, we thank you. So it's all yours.
Sure. Thank you for having us, Commissioner Bloom. So Amy and I are excited to be here today. We got to work on pulling together the pieces of this grant application, and I would reinforce, this is currently in application form, so with the DOT for some middle and consideration. But we were very excited for the equity and access opportunities that this provided as we were pulling together the pieces, and the increased safety and mobility and congestion reduction for the entire region. And so one of the pieces we will direct everyone to, there's now a website that has more information about the grant, and so you will see general information and some really neat videos. We found it important, you know, these grants are reviewed by DC, and they don't know Montague County. They don't know our concerns and our congestion and the traffic that we see, or the safety concerns that we have. And so these videos were crucial to really reinforcing the need for this project and why it was so important out of all of the many applications they'll receive from across the country. And we'll play a couple of these here for you. And then we talked through the grant application and what it does. So those of you who are wondering, you know, what project components include, those are here for you, as well as a map of the project location and the mobility it provides. And then something else that was really unique, Amy and I have done quite a few grant applications over the years together, and the widespread support for this one, I mean, having both sitting senators, Representative McKinley, the municipalities, this is incredible. As far as DOT review, it's very uncommon to have this sort of community support all together, and wanted to draw attention to that. Our regional agencies, I'd be remiss about thanking Bill and Mylan Park and MAP. I mean, this is incredible. And so with that, let's get you into it. Commissioner Bloom, we actually were going to start with the video you requested, so we'll go from you speaking to you speaking on camera, but let me play this for everyone. This is how we open the grant, so any of the reviewers were able to see the passion we have here in Mon County.
Hello, my name is Tom Bloom. I'm President of the Montague County Commission. We're very excited to be here to represent the county commissioners. It is really important to understand the need of this project. First of all, Montague County is what we call the oasis in the West Virginia desert. However, there is one thing that continually is lacking, and that is infrastructure. We now are opening up a whole other area for the county and for development. All the different programs that we offer out at Mylan Park, out at West Ridge, the businesses, the opportunities, we have never had before. But it's no good if you can't get them there. So this infrastructure isn't just roads. It's so much more. We are depending on this grant to help us grow not only locally, but regionally, and that's the key. Why choose Montague County over these others? And the bottom line is because we're going to work as a team to accomplish this. We want you and your support, and then what it's going to be able to do for the infrastructure, for our residents, but the whole wellness program and the whole concept that there's more to life than just getting from A to B. And Montague County, because of this equality of life and the ability to compete nationwide, put us on the map, and we're going to do that together.
Oh, sorry. Okay. And with that, I'll turn to Amy, who can talk through the grant components here and how this is an enhancement and expansion of the work at exit 155. Would you like the map?
Okay. Well, thanks, Megan. All of these federal grants are focused on certain criteria, and a lot of the focus for this one was about improving safety and operations, but thinking beyond the pavement, beyond the road. It was also about providing equity in transportation. That's really big right now, to make sure that, you know, folks who need to get places have options, which is why the multimodal corridor is so important. And also, you want to show in these grants that there's a benefit. This project has meaning, and it's really going to provide a significant difference to the users of the area. So to touch a little more on what Commissioner Bloom described as the project, he had mentioned the initial project that the DOH is pursuing and currently has funding in place for is for an improvement at I-79 exit 155. And that project has been underway for a very long time, sorely needed. As anybody who drives that area knows, that is a very critical area, both for day-to-day traffic into Morgantown, but also all those people that come and visit us for special events, football games, graduations. We want to make a great impression on them. And so looking to the east from the interchange and the interchange improvements, the big capacity improvement would be at the Sheets intersection on Mon Boulevard. One of the things is anybody who uses this corridor to leave the city, whether it's on a Friday night or Saturday after a football game, that intersection gets very congested. It's been reconfigured in the past, and those things have been stopgaps to make sure that traffic can still move. But looking long-term, a bigger improvement was needed. So there's a planned flyover that would go from the Star City Bridge side westbound towards I-79, and that will greatly improve capacity and how traffic operates there, and also safety. And then looking to the west, the new connection. Right now, if you want to go to Mylan Park, you know, it's serviced by a two-lane road that at times can be very dangerous to drive in the winter with water ponding and pooling on the road. There's also the really large curve that has an above-average crash rate in it. And so the idea is to have a better facility that connects downtown back out to the west side of the county and specifically to Mylan Park with a new four-lane boulevard and a multimodal path. So those options are there. In theory, you could ride on your bike from downtown, get on the rail trail, and from Star City, get on the shared-use path and make your way out to Mylan Park to attend a concert, to attend a game, or to do some other activity out there. Something else that increased transportation does is it opens doors for additional transit opportunities. Specifically, the Mon County Bus Garage for the public schools is out there. You know, much greater facility roadway-wise to get those buses in and out of there, and also to get kids to school. But it also helps mountain line with route planning, better resiliency. Travel times are better with our bus routing, because it's a multi-lane road.
Wonderful. So, you know, we've talked through the benefit and this access to Mylan Park that we talked about locally, and we all understand the wellness and the health and the benefits there. But again, you know, this grant is reviewed by those in DC who aren't familiar with Montague County. And so we've done one more video, and you'll see these on the website, but we wanted to really hone in on how special Mylan Park is and what that access means for our community.
Welcome to beautiful Mylan Park. My name is Terry Howes, and I'm the Executive Director. An interesting story about Mylan Park. It came from a vision that a little over 20 years ago developed it into this beautiful 400-acre facility that is the destination point for health, wellness, sports, and education. It grew from that initial vision into being something for everybody, and that included the building of Miracle Field for athletes of all abilities. We are anticipating a little over a million this year as we're building back and building back stronger. We anticipate in 2023 that to grow over 2 million. One of the issues we've had over the years is having the infrastructure and the ability for members of our community to get to the park. It's unimaginable how much more we can go and how better it can be for our community and for visitors to this park if we had the infrastructure and the accessibility to get to this park. The sky's the limit.
Hi, I'm Greg Morris. I'm the CEO of Pace Enterprises here in Mylan Park in Morgantown. And what we do is we're a nonprofit organization that provides job training, assessment, and placement of adults with disabilities. We have about a $5 million payroll, about 250 employees, so we are a significant employer in the area. Yeah, Pace moved to Mylan Park about 10 years ago, and it was because of that move that it really facilitated the dramatic growth that we've achieved over that time period. We've been able to expand our services and our lines of business. We're glad to be here. We look forward to the continued growth, and we want to be, very much be a part of that.
My name is Rachel Mitchell. I am the Director for the Montague County Center. Our kitchen is able to serve as an incubator space for up-and-coming business owners that may not have the ability or opportunity to operate in their own kitchen to start out their business growth. Healthy Kids, Inc. produce family-style meals from scratch ingredients. They package it, deliver it themselves to these local daycares, and they can also incorporate an educational level to the kids, and they talk about the ingredients and the food. This tunnel that we're in right now is managed by Operation Welcome Home and their Veterans Agriculture Program. They really target veterans that are looking to get hands-on activities, hands-on experience, that they can use that to transition into employment. Farmers are producing a lot. That's not the problem, but their ability to utilize all of their product is the problem that we're finding. We have the facility. We just need to have people be able to be able to get to us with more ease and convenience.
I have those moments where I drive in and you crest the hill on Chaplain Road. Two hours from that time, you hear the crack of the bat. You see the young athletes diving from the diving well, the fastest 3,200 in the country here two weeks ago, and it's just such a joy and the excitement that goes with it. And again, it's not the excitement of the moment. It's the excitement of what can come.
All right. So that's what we have. Commissioner Bloom, if there's anything else you'd like to add?
I didn't know. Since Ryan, you came in late. Would you want to add? You're going to stay quiet?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, I just want to ask, since Senator Clements, you've been such a big supporter, State Senator, would you like to speak? I didn't know. Would you... Is there anything you would like to say, Senator Clements? I mean, or... Okay, good. This is a rarity. When you're able to present this in such a way, as you can see, and we even don't even have about the new BMX, I mean, we added it at the end. So as you can see, it grows all the time. I'd like to turn it over to Sean and Jeff, because you and me, I'm very excited, so I'll be quiet.
I would like to say one thing, though, as we were naming off all the partners, it's really hard when you name partners, because then you always might forget some. So if you mention a couple of these, Tom, and I didn't hear them, that's great. But two partners that I don't think were mentioned is, one is the Board of Education. They have two facilities, three facilities, two facilities, Alternative Learning Center in the park, and their Mylan Park Elementary, which they're looking to expand the Alternative Learning Center. And then that's the main hub for their buses, so this is critical to them as far as the safety of those buses, you know, taking our kids to and from school every day. And another partner that probably wasn't mentioned but is represented here is West Virginia University, which is represented by Ron. Ron's going to put his other hat on and represent West Virginia University, and they're a big player. We've been talking about this project for a number of years, because when we made the decision to put the Aquatic Center up on that hill, we talked about, okay, we have to have better access to the park, and we've promised that. And this is kind of another iteration of our promise to make sure that we added that access, because it was a no-brainer. It was something that was needed. So just wanted to make sure that we didn't leave anybody out. That's all I have.
Just one note. I think it's important to note that this is a grant that was submitted by the commission. However, it was helped greatly and spearheaded by West Ridge. And it's important to note that West Ridge is a private entity, and they could have... And they're a business. They're a business to make money, but they've taken a community approach to this, and they've taken this work that's not just about West Ridge. It's about the entire area. And that's worth noting. The professional presentation of the grant, the grant writing that Megan and her team have put together with this is something that I don't know that we could have accomplished on our own. Those videos are, it's like something you'd see at a major international conference. So we appreciate all the effort and all the work and the holistic community approach that you've taken. We very well could have just been about West Ridge, but this is great. And we really appreciate the time and the innumerable hours, and I'm sure all the money that we were saved by your professional ability and the way we put this together. So we thank you for that.
And again, not sure how much it was mentioned, but the actual district is bringing dollars to the table to support this project. That's the local match. The commission is putting dollars in on this from our ARP funds and possibly others, so it really is, there are not very many examples of something that's such a universal project that everybody can embrace.
And the one other question that was asked, this is not a competing grant. This is a separate grant fund that is separate that we're applying for, and that's really important. separate grant fund that is separate that we're applying for, and that's really important. And I'll just end it by saying that, you know, to the public and also to the grant people who are gonna be looking at it, you know, this is coming from West Virginia, and the best part of West Virginia is the first two letters, "we." And that's how we, we are going to provide the programs for everyone. So on behalf of all the county commissioners, I appreciate it. Great. We will move on. Grants? Oh, good. No, good. Okay, correspondence? Letter, "Thank you from Mont County regarding the 23 grant funding," and that's just self-explanatory. Any other correspondence?
One other note. We received an invitation from Ed, Ed Denny at the Aquatic Contract Center that 4D Tech Solutions will be doing another technology demonstration in the diving well on August 4th at 8:30 if any of the commissioners want to participate.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
No.
Okay, moving forward. New business, consideration to prove requisition number four for the Morgantown Industrial Park Phase II Administrative Expense Fund?
I need to make one correction. It's actually requisition number five.
Five?
Five.
The requisition is for $10,934.25.
Answer to Steptoe and Johnson.
Correct.
Move to approve requisition five as presented?
Second.
Five moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. B, consideration to prove modifications to the county commission's paid leave policy?
Move to approve Montague County Commission employee policies on paid leave as presented?
Second.
Properly moved in second?
The changes, I'll go real quick because, again, we have a lot of big things in this meeting, and this, this, this alone is a huge standalone item for our employees. It's something we've been working on for some time. Bobby, you're in those conversations we, we were having a couple of years ago about accrued leave, so I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're finally making those changes. The actual changes to the program, to the process is to move to an accrual basis for annual leave starting on the first day of employment. Previously, employees had to work here a year before they could take a leave, any leave. Provides for a personal leave carryover process, replacing the use-or-loose policies for annual leave. So previously, you got to the end of the year. If you didn't use your leave, it, it disappeared. Now you'll be able to carry over, and it's a graduated scale depending on your years of service. So that's a big change. We also have changed sick leave to accrual basis, starting with the first day of, of employment, just like we've been for personal leave. And it also provides for a, a sick leave carryover process, replacing the user.
That was.
That's not user leave, yes. And then we also provide a, provides for a policy for an availability for advanced leave, what we call negative leave. Sometimes an employee starts work for you and they have something that's, that's in their personal life that they didn't plan for, that they need leave. So we have a policy for actually allowing our employees to go into negative leave, you know, and a whole, it's a whole policy as far as how that's dealt with and how it's documented and how it's approved and the repayment process. So those are some big things, and I'm happy that we're finally working through that. We wanted to get this in place now so that employees can actually, you know, have a half year before the end of the, end of the calendar year to actually take advantage of it. So, anything else?
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Next big item. To consider for approval an excess levy proposed by the Mont Emergency Medical Services Incorporated for the acquisition of equipment, other capital improvements, and for payment of a portion of general operating maintenance and other expenses, order the proposed excess levy to appear on the November 8, 2022 general election ballot.
I move that we approve the levy proposal as attached and to order the proposed excess levy to appear on the November 8, 2022 general election ballot.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I.
This is a little bit different than what was proposed before.
Yes.
And that's why, if you can clarify.
The original proposal came to us on 6/29. The, the total for the four years was $21,011,859 for the four years. The first year was at 4.6 million with a 5% increase each year thereafter. We did our due diligence and provided some constructive feedback to Mont EMS. And as a result of that feedback, the current levy proposal that we have in front of us to approve is a little less aggressive. It's four years, $17,881,598. The first year being $4,404,241 with an average growth rate each year just a little under 1%. So that's kind of in line with what we currently have in our FIRE levy. In addition, we reaffirmed the commission, the commitment of the two health systems. And that was very important to us, too, that when we first started having this discussion with the two health systems in Mont EMS, we, the county, you know, has said, and regardless, you know, this is the first step in formalizing that agreement, but the county wanted to be an equal partner, an equal third partner of, of this support. So it was imperative, it was important to the commission that we made sure that, you know, we were going to have continued support from the two health systems. And, and through our conversations with Forrest Wines, we have affirmed that. So what we have in front of us is something that, you know, I personally am, am ready to, to approve that it go on the ballot. But it, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good balance from what was originally presented, and I think we provided some valid, some valid feedback to the process. And I'd ask, actually, if.
Yeah.
If we can ask Forrest Wines to come up if he has anything to say.
You'd rather hear from Forrest.
Yeah, you'd rather hear from Forrest.
Forrest, Mont EMS, thank you all for approving this. I don't have any specific comments at this time, but I do think that the, the conversation back and forth was fantastic. And I think it's, it's almost very apropos with Senator Capito's comments on the growing infrastructure in Mont County and your comments, Commissioner Bloom, about the need for infrastructure and sustainable things as Mont EMS, or as the county continues to grow to be able to serve the citizens and people that come to work and play here. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work on this. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passes. Consideration of appointment to the Pleasant Valley Public Service District?
John Broski is, is currently serving. He would like to be reappointed. We haven't had any other applications.
Okay.
Move that we approve the reappointment of John Broski to the Pleasant Valley PSD?
Second.
So move second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Consideration to prove a lease agreement for property purchased by the county commission through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, March 11, 1999, described as cast district map one parcel 001 to the adjoining property owner Andrew Gillis.
I move that we approve the lease agreement as provided. This is a formality that we go through each year.
Right.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Consideration to prove requisition number 64 for the University Town Center Excise Tax District Administrative Expense Fund?
Requisition is for $8,350.15, and those funds will be paid to Steptoe and Johnson.
Move to approve requisition 64 as presented?
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, another great future economic development plan. Consideration of adoption of a resolution of the Mont County Commission, which would approve a lease agreement bond between the County Commission and Enraut Properties LLC pursuant to the terms of which Enraut Properties will construct certain emergency management and related facilities on property located in the Morgantown Industrial Park and lease the same to the County Commission, and the County Commission would pay lease rentals to Enraut Properties, which would repay financing undertaken to construct such facilities and pursuant to which the County Commission will have the right to purchase the facilities upon the determination of the Morgantown Industrial Park TIF district, authorizing the president of the commission to execute and deliver the lease agreement at the appropriate time.
I move to approve the resolution, which ultimately authorizes the president of the commission to execute and deliver the lease agreement at the appropriate time.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any, really no need discussion.
No, this is a big item, though. This is something that the county has been working on for, for as long as I can remember, the replacement of our 911 center, which is currently, as everyone knows, landlocked. And they're, they're, they can't expand any. So we've, we've, we've been working on this for some time, and it's, this really kind of sets everything in motion to make that a reality. We expect probably by fiscal, next fiscal year, we'll actually be moving into this and hopefully finish construction.
Yeah.
So I, I, this is, this is, this is a big deal. So again, I'd like to.
Yeah, I was gonna suspend the rules. Did you want to add any comment? Please, Phil Franklin. Yeah. We appreciate you working with us on this.
Glenn Adrian, member of Enraut Properties LLC, owners of the industrial, Morgantown Industrial Park. Just to give you an update, we did have a all-hands-on meeting yesterday to give you an idea so we can put together the calendar, because that's important for us to be able to move forward on the lease. But right now, the game plan would be is that next week, they will put out the bid, qualification bid in the paper next week. The design, the, the TIF portion of the project should go out the first part of August. The plan is then to be able to put that out to bid for the roads and the infrastructure and the site excavation. We expect to open the bids somewhere around September 5th, commence construction the week thereafter. At that, at that point, we will then put out the bids for the design will be submitted for the building and the garage. That will go out for public, go out for public bid. And we hope to mobilize and commence construction of that mid to late October. So the anticipation, we, we anticipate that by the fourth quarter, third, beginning of the fourth quarter of 2023, then we would have our certificate of occupancy to provide that, to turn over to the MECA 911 group to go ahead and finish the insides, you know, get their equipment and everything installed. So we are on an aggressive timeline, but I think that's most appropriate for this project.
Agreed.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Just a quick note.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's important to note that it may be confusing why we're building a 911 building but leasing it. The, the purpose behind the lease is to protect the TIF. In a TIF district, you don't pay any, the real estate taxes all go to pay back the bonds that were sold to raise the money to improve the, the land where the, where the TIF was, was entered. So by doing the lease, we're, part of that lease agreement is we'll still pay the real estate property taxes that would otherwise accrue for the life of the lease and for the life of the TIF. And then once that time period is over, then the building would be deeded over to the county in full. So just thought that was an important note.
Thank you. Can proper move in second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Great. Report away. Is there any other new business before? Okay. Moving forward, we're towards the end. Reports from elected officials. Are there any elected officials or, see? Yes, thank you. Good morning.
Joe, this meeting has a little bit of everything for you.
Yes. I can tell you that in the legislature, especially on the House side with 100 members, we always stand up and say, I didn't plan on talking today. On the contrary, I did plan on talking today.
Okay.
I would like to say, first of all, that as a member of the public, I greatly appreciate the forward-thinking of this Mont County Commission and what you guys have been doing over the past years and moving forward. Today is a perfect example of what's needed in this county. And Mr. Bloom said it best on the radio this morning when he said that you're planning, you're not reacting, you're planning to what the future will be. That's the first thing. The second thing, and I should have written down because I do have, I'm a thousand, and I believe Senator Clements is also, we're 1,000% behind the project. I will tell you that Mr. Lynch, I believe he left out, but Mr. Lynch knows I've been pushing, this is the veteran's highway. We very much want that in that area to resemble that, but it doesn't matter. We're 1,000% behind this project. We do believe it will do everything that you guys have discussed, not only among yourselves but in the grant. So I would just like to say that. I also, for the EMS levy that we're looking at on November the 8th, I will also tell you that I'm supporting that heavily. As Chair of Fire and EMS in Charleston, I can tell you, I see what the problems are statewide. And people believe that we got a golden spoon in our mouth up here in Montague County and we don't have any needs. That's far from the truth. We got a plan for the future. And I believe Forrest has said this many times in the best way possible, it's not about when you need that ambulance. It's about being prepared and having the readiness out there. And that's what we sometimes forget, that the readiness. And it costs money to keep these crews and stuff out there. So to him and his group, I will tell you, I will work to support this and hope wholeheartedly that the community continues to look at this as a, a safety need. Now, as always, there is, and I don't want to say it's a but, but I did attend the Fireman's Association meeting last night. I just wanted to make it to the commission. We appreciate and what you're also doing, looking at communications on the western end. With the Catherine Nobbs Tower that you put up and spent significant money on, there is issues out there, not only with the cell service in the community is still very much having problems with the cell service. So that still needs to look at. Why? I don't know what the problems are. And I know Mr. Fortney and Mr. Smith has been looking very heavy at the communications problems among the first responders out there. And they even offered some things last night that temporary used to, to be done, excuse me, put in place. So I appreciate that. But I will implore to you that these are some huge issues out on the western end of communications. Just recently, the Waits Town Department, was my understanding, they were called out for a cardiac arrest problem, and they didn't receive the notification that there are people between them. So fortunately, I believe that was taken care of by another means. What it was, I'm not sure. So I would implore to you that you keep the fire under this. I know Mr. Fortney's probably put a million miles in traveling around out there looking at what the reasons are and what's going on. But we also may have to call in some bigger guns to look at this situation to try and get it resolved as quick as possible. With that, I'll sit down and shut up and talk to you individually.
Anyone else? You drove that distance. I was hoping you'd be able.
I want to echo a lot of what Joe said, mainly with respect to the forward-thinking of this commission. So oftentimes, we in West Virginia have been too reactionary and not proactive. As, as I've said before, I was at a conference in Georgia, and they talked about the city of Atlantic growing by 3 million people. Well, they're not sitting back waiting for it to happen. They're getting ready for it with the infrastructure. And that is something I think that West Virginia needs to do, is to get our infrastructure in place so that when these businesses, when these industries can come into an area, they have a place to go. We have done a lot to try to make West Virginia a much better business-friendly community, to attract industry, and we're starting to see the results. But we've got to get in and fix our infrastructure. And I will tell you that I will do everything I can to make sure these projects move forward because they create one big thing, one big word in West Virginia, and that's, and that's J, J-O-B-S. And that's what will move West Virginia forward. I thank you for the opportunity to be here. And I saw a sign one time that says, pray for me, I travel Route 7. So that's one thing that we work on also, is trying to get an extension of Interstate 68 West from here into the gas field.
Right.
Which is a tremendous boon to the economy of West Virginia. I appreciate you allowing me to be here. And if anything I can ever do, don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator.
Anyone else, elected officials? Sean?
Okay. It's been a busy week. Last week, I did participate in the Juma meeting. It was, along with Ron Justice sits in on that meeting, too. Very productive meeting in regards to a lot of things, moving the, the Aquatic Center forward. And, and the programming just keeps continuing and what we offer to the, to the citizens. So that was, I was away from the office, but I thought it was important enough that I participated in that meeting because it is, you know, we've been precariously coming out of COVID and, and ramping up operations. And, and, you know, I appreciate the whole committee willing to still meet monthly to keep our eye on where we're at and keep moving it forward. Monday, I, as we've probably mentioned a couple of times, we met with representatives from Senator Capito and Manchin's office to prevent, to present our infra grant. And then Monday evening, I went to Tryon-Halek Community Senior Dinner. That's the first time I was able to go there in three years because in 2019, when I had my two knee surgery replacements, I kind of missed 2019, and then we went into COVID for two years. So I got to see friends for, you know, the first time in a couple of years. And Tom Huggins, who used to be the president, he was there for the first time in three years. So it was kind of weird. It was, it was bittersweet because I got to see some old friends.
It was, it was bittersweet, because I got to see some old friends, I also, you know, talked to a few members who had lost their spouses, so it was just a great opportunity to connect, and that, the Tryon group has always been a soft spot for me, I really enjoy going out there. So, I'm glad I was able to get back to them, and they continue to profess their thanks to the commission for some of the things we've done to help their center, and it's really picking up. I mean, as far as the community aspect of it, the senior aspect of it, that was the biggest group I've seen in years, I mean, ever, that was in the room, there wasn't a seat left in the room. So, the senior part of it's picking up, and the community part of it has really, really picked up post-COVID, to levels that it's never been at before, so it was good seeing that. Yesterday, we had our meeting with the Dominion Post Editorial Board, again, to present the InfraGrant. Last night, Commissioner Bloom and I attended the City Council meeting, which was here. I thought that it would be a good idea to, you know, show up to welcome them to their new home for maybe the next year, and as I said last night, I have a unique perspective. They're my constituents and I'm theirs, because I live in the city, I'm the commissioner that lives in the city. So, I think it's been very, and I want to thank our staff and the city admin staff for all the work that they've done in actually making this happen. It may seem, sound simple to just have a meeting somewhere, but to really set everything up, adjust the schedule, the Sheriff's Department for providing security, is a lot of effort. And I know it's been a little bit of a pain for our staff to set up and get prepared for it, and I'm sure it was a pain on the city side to have to relocate for, for a year. But I really, you know, that's the type of thing that, to me, it may seem small, but that's a big indication to me of the public of how these, these two entities, the commission and the city council are working together, you know, to, as I like to say all the time, you know, we shouldn't focus on where we disagree, but focus on where we agree, and that would give us enough stuff to do to keep really busy and, you know, serve our citizens. So, that was, it was a long time coming, and to finally see that meeting be carried off, I was happy to see that. Today's a regular day, at the end of the day, I have Morgantown Area Partnership Monthly Executive Committee meeting, and we have Business After Hours at the Montague County Ballpark, so anybody who wants to participate in that, that's always a great event. Tomorrow morning, I have Mylan Park Executive Board meeting. So, things are, things are busy. Forrest, thank you. I know we've had a lot of back and forth, a lot of frank discussions. I want to thank you, your organization. I want to thank Albert Wright of WVU Hospitals and David Goldberg of Mon Health Systems, who have, when we merged these systems a couple of years ago, have really been providing an excellent service to our community by doing this, and their willingness to be part of this as we go forward is very important, and I wish the levy well, you know, on the ballot, and I certainly am a supporter. Our 911 center, this is another example of our commission paying attention to our infrastructure, replacing our infrastructure where needed, and it's been a continuous, it's been a continuous process over the last couple of years, not just looking where we're at, but looking, looking forward and growing for the future, so that, and every dollar that we invest are in hard infrastructure, so that those dollars will continue to repay our citizens. So, happy to see that moving forward. This Gateway Project, I couldn't be happier as a representative to the Mylan Park Foundation. I see how much it would help, I see how much it would help the school system, I see how much it would help the public, I see how much it would help the, all the activities that are hosted in the park, the opportunities for our mobility-challenged citizens to, you know, with the BMX, as Tom said, with the BMX track that just got the award last week, you know, just, there's a bright future. But as we talk, when we talked to the DPE Editorial Board yesterday, this isn't our singular focus. As you can see, we have a lot of things going on, we have the I-68 Commerce Park, which we, we don't let people forget about, we have the Harmony Grove Interchange and the expansion to the industrial park, which Joe Statler never lets anybody forget about. It has been instrumental in Senator Clements in making sure that we push that forward. We have the Richwood Project in the downtown city, we just have so many things that are going on at the same time, so this isn't, you know, it was important that we let the Dominion Post know that this isn't a singular project, that we're focusing all the way across the county sometimes, but we were, we were showing so much attention to this individual project is because it's important with this grant being successful. So, Ryan, thank you, I know we've had, we meet monthly with Ryan, and, you know, we beat on Ryan when Ryan needs to be beat on, and we beat on the DOH when they need to be beat on, but these are all frank discussions to make sure that we're keeping things moved forward. As Delegate Statler says, as a project manager, people don't, projects fail because people don't plan to fail, they fail to plan. And that's, that's important, that as we move forward, to be proactive. You'll hear that word a lot, to be proactive and look forward, and just not be reactionary and deal with issues as they come up, but try to foresee issues and deal with them going forward. So, just, today's, today's a great day for Montague County, so thanks to everybody. One last thing, and we didn't mention it, but as we approved a couple of weeks ago, next week's meeting is not on Wednesday, it's next Friday. So, for the press, everybody make sure that, you know, have people show up next Wednesday for the meeting, it's next Friday at 10:00. So, that's just the one change for just that week, so I wanted to make sure we mentioned that. Thank you.
Not much more to add, I'd just point out, on the, on the proposed levy, Delegate Statler mentioned it, and Forrest has beat this into our heads, since it first came to us, it's not just about when you get called and there's reimbursement from your insurance, there's a hard cost to the readiness aspect, it's the number one aspect in my mind of this levy. So, when these EMS workers are sitting in the, in their depots waiting for these calls to come, there's a cost to that. When you make that phone call, you want someone to answer, and when 911 answers and puts the call out to EMS, you want them to come. And that's the same way it works with fire departments, with the fire fees you pay in the city, and, and with the cost of the money that we put into volunteer fire departments, that readiness has a cost, and it's imperative that we do consideration of this levy, and hopefully the citizens educate themselves and consider it on the ballot in the fall. We appreciate all the efforts Forrest and, and all the support from, from our elected officials. But with that, I'm sure everybody's tired of listening to us talk, so I'll move it over to Tom.
Yeah, and I'll finish real quickly. On behalf of the county commissioners, for Ryan Lynch, Megan O'Reilly, and Amy Stoudt, thank you. You were putting the future of Montague County in the hands of, hopefully, the federal government who can understand, and you made a presentation that makes it very simple to understand and the need, and we really appreciate that. To Glenn Adrian and M.R.A.L., you know, we've been wanting the 911, we've talked about it, we're bringing it to a reality. I mean, you're seeing very, very positive things. EMS, you know, Delegate Statler says it, it's a statewide problem. I think one of the best things that happened to Montague County was you bringing the interims here, because what happened was they got to see Montague County in the real perspective, not the perspective of sitting back home in Charleston thinking, oh, it's all WVU. You got to really relate to what was going on. Senator Clements, I've called you several times, and you've done everything I've asked to get things done, and I really appreciate you being there, not only for the citizens of West Virginia, but for the citizens of Montague County. I do want to also thank, that you aren't aware of, I was contacted by the parishioners of Highland Presbyterian Church in Lancaster, Pennsylvania. They brought a group up, intergenerational mission trip, 27 individuals. They are here this week, and they've been going through Montague County, and we gave them a number of houses to fix up, which they're doing. They are also working at the parks, they're down at Mason Dixon Park right now, working, and I do want to personally thank them, they've already excited and like it so much, they want to double the amount of people next year, and very appreciate all their help. With that, I want to say one more thing, we, we being Renetta, Colleen and I, will be representing Montague County at the NACO Convention in Denver, Colorado, and I'm very proud to be on the healthy counties, and we've been able to give a lot of reports and information that's going back and forth, and I'm hoping to promote this, even down at NACO, to promote why we're doing this, and I hope that I can get this out to everyone. And with that, you've been great, I appreciate it, it's 58 minutes, I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Salute.
We be gone. Thank you.